All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Planning Board Meeting of October 22nd. It's an unusual Thursday. Before we get going, I just, as far as business--
Tuesday, Steve.
Oh, jeez, Thursday.
That was, yeah.
It's usually a Thursday.
Tuesday after 2:00.
Usually a Thursday. No, on a Thursday.
Thursday after last year.
You got me nervous.
Yeah. What are we doing here? Okay.
It's a different location, right?
Different location. Thank you. So, just a couple of quick items I wanted to touch on before we get moving. At the last meeting, there were some issues we had to ask somebody to leave the meeting. I think everyone who comes in, whether it's an applicant or a butler, is usually-- I don't remember a time where we haven't given anyone a chance to speak at length. I just, I expect everyone to be cordial to each other and allow others to speak, so. In addition to that, submission guidelines, I've talked about this before. Anything being submitted, whether you're an applicant or a butler, should go directly to Town Hall, to Paul or Nicole, if Paul's not here as well. Things shouldn't be sent to my personal email, any of the board's personal emails to be considered for anything, whether it's a decision or to re-decide something or to, you know, bring up a vote again. I just want to make sure that's said again because it continues to happen. And those submissions to my personal email or yours, we don't look at them, we give them to Paul or the General Counsel. I want to make sure everybody's clear that we're unpaid public officials. You all know that. And I don't want to speak individually for everyone, but my experience with everyone here is everybody here is honest and I think is here in the best interest of the town. So when we take a vote on something, we shouldn't have to worry about intimidation or threats to us, you know, violent threats, which happened to me last week. So I'm not going to get into details about it, but I don't think anybody who's serving in a public office should have to deal with that and, you know, proper authorities are called and everything, but I just want to make that clear, that that happened, because I know it's the buzz everywhere. Let's see. Town meeting. We did have the town meeting and I'll talk about this, we can talk about it after the A and R that we have, but I just wanted to kind of put that out there that we need to, we need to be a little better prepared for town meeting. It was my second one. I've been the chair for, what, six months? Never been in public office before, so it was very, very different. I think we need to set some policies. So that's something I'm going to ask the board to maybe get together at a further meeting to go over what we want to do going forward, so we can better prepare and not have such a mess as what happened at town meeting last night, so. All that being said, do we have any, we have minutes to approve? Oh, we have a bill, we, I'll close to the minutes first. The minutes for October 17th. Is that, everyone had a chance to look them over?
Yeah, there were a few revisions, just a few revisions on this version that I made this afternoon.
They're already reflected in here?
In that copy, yes.
Did this just come out? Did this just come out?
The minutes?
Yeah.
Oh, yes. I was looking at, why are there comments? Oh, yeah, because, yeah, there are. Yes, we, well, Nicole sent them out yesterday, but I hadn't reviewed them, and so I just made a few edits to it.
When you're saying that's something new, could you just let us know when it's in? Because I checked the website once and then I don't know, look, I don't keep on checking it back again.
What was in there when she sent the memo out?
Was it in the memo?
It was already there when she issued the memo to you a couple of days ago.
It wasn't?
Yeah. Yes.
It's okay, there's a lot in the notes.
Do we have any further changes?
Can, will you hold off? I want to just read this. I can do it afterwards.
I'm fine with that.
Which one's it through?
We do have one bill. Do you have it still? It's just--
Oh, there it is, yeah.
The 400, is that the one that was in the folder as well? The bill was in the folder?
No, that one, I--
You can explain it.
Yeah, again, this one, it wasn't because this was, this was a conference I went to last week. And it's just, this is a reimbursement because we can't pay for services that haven't happened, so I had to pay for it, so. It's the Southern New England American Campaign for Campaigning Association.
For a conference, right?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I think only three people that were at the meeting are here tonight, so I don't even know if you can approve these minutes.
Yeah, we can hold off. I don't want to rush them. As long as everyone else is okay with that, right?
Yes.
I obviously have-- Yeah. Yeah, we'll hold off until the next meeting for that. Does anyone have any questions for Paul on that one bill? I feel like one day we're going to get a big stack of bills.
Could be coming.
Is that coming? For those, when that does come, if you could put it together ahead of time and get it to us, we can look at them and then--
This was just because it was last Thursday and--
No, I understand.
Yeah.
All right. Unless there's questions?
Motion to approve the bill submitted.
Motion to approve a bill submitted.
Second.
Motion of the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Moving on, we have an A and R endorsement. Barnside Corporation, 48 Walker Street.
I just don't know--
Do we have anyone here for that?
If we've been in touch and there was a challenge for the applicant and engineer to be here, but they asked that it still go forward.
So are you comfortable then letting us know what's going on here?
I, I--
Pretty straightforward.
I have not been able to get to this.
Okay.
But I know it is for an additional lot.
So copies there?
Pretty straightforward. They both have more than 150 feet of fines. They're all regular shape. I'm not sure the shape factors are in range.
Certainly was.
What zill is this in?
Might be in the--
Our 40. It's our 40.
So they need it.
It's our 40 and they're both over 40. So I've--
They have, they have vital access.
Yeah.
As planned, go, this one's pretty straightforward.
We could use some of that.
Yeah, I think it's pretty straightforward myself, so unless there's any objection, I entertain a motion to endorse. We have a motion to endorse the A and R.
I can wait for discussion, but--
Sure.
The well for the House of Lot One exists within the boundaries of Lot Two. Is that any issue?
What are you reading from?
It says well. Doesn't matter.
I mean, from my perspective, that's, until the other lot's sold, it's under common ownership. And then it's up to the owner of Lot One to make the easement correctly, but there's no way we would be involved in that.
Okay.
Maybe they don't use the well, like, oh, Lot Two, who knows?
Anything? Nothing.
A second.
We have a motion of the second. Any further discussion on this? All right, hearing none, all in favor to endorse?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. Thank you. All right, so while they're signing, the next issue we have on the agenda is any decision or a man for special permit 488 Bay Road and Fairly Lane. Unfortunately, we have two planning board members who were not able to make it tonight and we need to have them here, so we need to continue this. But we need to decide on a meeting date to continue it, too. I don't think I'm on that one.
No, you're not.
Still Kevin's pending.
So we have a definite availability on Tuesday, the 30th, for Counsel?
Counsel is available?
The 29th. Julie will not be able to make it because she won't be back until the 30th. Major problem scheduling our next meeting.
I'm sorry, did you hear back from Amy?
Not yet.
Oh, no. And Julie's leaving when?
I don't know when she's leaving. Do you know when she's leaving?
You, I, you emailed her that. She didn't say it, but I thought you replied back.
I didn't get, I didn't get a response yet, so. The bottom line is, Joe has missed one meeting so far with this, and he can't miss a second, so I'm more concerned about Joe missing a meeting. Oh, I'm concerned about anybody missing this meeting because it's important, but that's the major issue is if Joe's available and-- We know, he said he was available the 29th.
Well, Joe was available the 29th, they have the 30th.
Okay. It's not ideal, but it's been thrown out that we have a meeting this Friday. It gives us enough time to post the notice. I, well, not, my family will not be happy about that, but if that's the only option to get everybody here, then, you know, I'll do what we need to do, but--
I'm not doing that. I'm going away for the weekend.
All right. Thank you.
I do not have a conference on the 29th.
So if it was the 29th, we would miss Orin and Julie, which would, and we have to have this, we have to have this back to the court by the 4th, and we can't do it the day before or anything like that. Then, you know, we need time to prepare it. We have to be realistic, so.
Mr. Chair, so we don't have Orin and Julie tonight as a reason why we can't do this?
We don't have Joe and Julie. Joe's already missed a meeting for this and we can't move forward without, and Counsel's not here because she recommended that we--
Wait for her.
Yeah, well, not for her, we wait for at least Joe, oh, Julie. I don't want to put words in her mouth. She recommended that we--
Get everyone.
Yeah.
Her recommendation.
Yeah, she recommended that we move it to the next meeting.
So it needs to be next week sometime?
Yeah, it has to be before, it has to be, what's the date of the week? It has to be--
Friday's the first. The 4th is Monday.
Right.
Yeah.
So we have to--
Yeah.
We have to have that stamped by the town clerk on the 4th.
On the 4th.
At the latest.
Yeah.
Preferably sooner, but, you know, what will happen is once, once you all finalize or give us direction, final direction on the two decisions, then we'll work with Steve and Amy to get that all, you know, in order. And Steve looks at it and then Julie will be back to sign it as the planning board clerk. And then once she signs it, then I just bring it down to the town clerk.
So do we have any known availability of Julie and Joe?
The only, the only thing I got back from Julie was that she's not available, she's, what I got was she's flying back on the 30th, so I don't know when she leaves or when.
So the 31st?
That's not going to happen. Sorry.
Am I costumes?
Yeah, no, I think--
My concern with having it Tuesday would be that Joe would be here, so that would leave my biggest concern is him missing another meeting because he can't miss two. But without Julie and without Orin, that's two more voters, so we're down to four people that can vote on, we already voted, but for the final decision, if Counsel is okay with that, then we can move to that. But we just, for our purposes, we need to actually schedule a date for this.
And what is Julie, when is Julie leaving?
That's what we don't know.
Yeah, we don't know.
But because we'd have to post any meeting with sufficient notice, it almost doesn't matter.
Which is how much?
Just to be clear for the record, Scott's involved in this only scheduling wise for a meeting, so everybody is aware.
Well, Scott has to be here to help get the form, to launch the meeting.
Yes.
So--
Well, no, I want to make it clear, we're not discussing the actual topic, so he's, didn't have to recuse for this discussion.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. Yeah, so--
Just have your own.
So if, if Town Counsel is okay with two members not being here that voted on it, neither Orin nor Julie have missed one with this topic before, so.
What about, well, okay, so Kevin can't make it on Friday. Do we know whether Julie or, and Joe could make it on Friday?
We don't know. We don't know.
Because then we're just missing one.
Yeah.
What's the soonest it can be done with the proper reputation?
What we can do, we have 48 hours. We have, we can schedule for Friday and schedule for Tuesday because we have a forum now, we can schedule those, and then we can, we can cancel one or the other if we need to. With proper notice, you would know that better than I, so.
Right. You need 48 hours.
What do we need to cancel, do you have to have, you have to have the meeting to cancel it?
I'm sorry, do you have to have--
If you scheduled for Friday and Tuesday, and if we didn't have a lot of people, could you cancel it without having a meeting?
So if, if, say we hear from Julie and Joe tonight, we schedule it for Friday and Tuesday now as a board. We, we schedule it for Friday, and they say they can't make it or they can't, whatever it is tomorrow morning, we can either post it or post that we're canceling it.
I wouldn't--
As long as it's within the proper timeline. I don't want to, but--
Right, because we'd have to make sure if something went wrong on Friday, we post on Thursday for Tuesday meetings, so.
You, you might need two meetings anyhow because it's probably--
We're not going to take two meetings for this. We're going to have one or--
Well, I'm not sure what you're going to see, see the sign on Friday or Tuesday.
Sorry, see--
What document you're going to see the sign.
Well, you have the drafts.
Yeah, but there's no, okay, but you're going to have to do something to those drafts.
Right.
And you, the drafts are not just minor edits, from what I can tell.
Well, the good news is you made a lot of proposals.
I understand, I was waiting for Amy to respond.
Right.
I'd like to see her.
Yeah, that goes back to my, to my issue of preparedness for the board. I think when we go through these, a lot of times, you know, we're editing and re-editing and going over things again and again, and, you know, not that it's the number one item, but it's taxing on the staff here, but also I feel like we're just redoing things that we could have addressed at the meeting itself. So I think, I think we should be doing this, you know, when we went through all the, all the conditions, they type them up, we, there should be minor edits, there shouldn't be a whole rewrite of what they write up.
Well, and the good news is--
This one's in special.
You went through most of the conditions before. Doesn't mean you couldn't revisit, but I think the, you know, the, a couple of the major things would be Orin's recommendations on the findings.
Well, it's not, I don't want to--
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not. I'm just saying that the changes themselves would just, in general, be those findings. And then we had to, because of the vote, Amy recommended we create, we separate and create two decisions, one for the site plan, which you, which has the conditions, which you've largely seen, and then the special permit decision, which you have the draft of, which is a much shorter because it doesn't have the conditions in it.
Yeah, the decision should take two meetings. One where we make the decision and the conditions, and the second where we go over the written conditions to make sure that they're accurately portray what we discussed. So I don't feel like that's an opportunity to just revamp the whole entire thing because we had already gone through it all. That's, that's my take on it, and that's how I think we should do things moving forward. But--
So the soonest we can meet is Friday?
Thank you.
The latest we can meet is Friday? The following week, right?
No, that's too, that's too late. The latest we could meet would be--
Because they'd need to, yeah, because the decision's to be final and written and stamped the following business day, so.
We would have to meet, Julie said she's back on Wednesday, the 30th, by seven or something, I think she said seven. I mean, we could meet next Wednesday. No, Wednesday, Town Counsel available? It's interesting stuff, folks.
She is not available.
I don't know. Other than Tuesday, and she said no Monday.
Can you do a late start on Wednesday?
She didn't say, she's not available Friday? We don't know.
We haven't, I've asked, I've texted her, but I haven't heard back from her.
Well, that's why I think we try to schedule one for Friday and then one for Tuesday because those are the two days we know.
She said she's been Wednesday, and I said, oh, we need to do this. She said, okay, well, my case, Tuesday still works.
Okay.
So Wednesday, I think she said she--
But you're still in this--
I'll try to make it Friday.
We're still in the same boat that Orin and Julie are here.
Yeah, so--
Joe's available Wednesday, too.
Well, that's why I think we schedule it for Friday and Tuesday.
Will Amy be here Friday?
Yeah, we're waiting here.
Yeah.
So we really don't know anything.
We know for sure that she's--
Seems that way. We don't know anyone's schedule, which we got to schedule something between now and next Wednesday.
We, we know for sure that Town Counsel's available Tuesday. We don't know for sure if the others are.
Right.
So that's why my recommendation is to schedule two meetings and we can end up going with the best--
So can we get a quorum for Friday to at least show up and agree to the schedule for the following week?
I can be here Friday. I can be here.
It's two.
Well, you could, we could just go ahead and set two.
Then just cancel it if we don't need it.
We could just set two. I would just go ahead and set both of them.
That's an interesting idea.
You've already set it.
And then just write canceled on one if we don't need it?
Yeah.
Can we schedule it early, like 6:00 or 6:00 on Friday?
I'm, I'm okay with that noon if you want.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, because-- Well, we have a schedule of 48 hours, but--
I'm available in the time of Friday.
Would be earlier better, or?
Makes, doesn't make as much, doesn't make that much difference on Friday.
I'm available anytime.
I think, yeah, I think my expect, my gut feeling is that we're going to end up on Tuesday, so.
Can I just ask on Tuesday, knowing that Amy is a definite, who here is available?
I think so.
And we know Joe is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I really think Julie should be here, too.
Yeah, I think we all should be here, but--
So can we start a little bit later on Wednesday and give her time to quit here? It's unfortunate, but--
What time is she getting back?
I said seven, I think.
Yeah, so--
But I thought we were planning plans?
We don't know if that's landing at Providence.
My thought on Friday is if, you know, this is a mess.
Just go for Friday.
I say we set one up for Friday and then one for Tuesday. I mean, we're all, we're all kind of bending over backwards here, and I think--
Joe said I could do Friday, but the earliest I could make it would be around 7:30.
So you guys-- That's the important one, we need to have Joe here because he's already missed a meeting for this.
Well, so Kevin, now, we didn't have meetings last time.
So we're here, 7:30 Friday.
We didn't talk about this last week, did we?
Last week we didn't raise it, so I didn't--
No.
Julie arrives in Providence at 7:00 P.M.
Yeah.
She'll be here till eight.
Nine.
So let's say, why don't we, why don't we set one for Friday at 7:30 and then another one for Tuesday?
Friday at 7:30?
Yeah.
Joe says he can't be here.
Oh, is that what he said? Okay. That sucks.
I won't, I will not keep us here long and I--
I won't be running again for planning board, I don't think, until it happens.
I won't keep us here long, I promise, but I expect everybody to be prepared if we end up having that meeting.
That's if Amy's available.
Yeah. Amy may not be, so. So let's schedule it for, we all in agreement for Friday, 7:30? And Tuesday, five?
No.
Tried.
I think there's nothing better. Standard time on Tuesday?
Yeah, 7:30.
Yeah.
Um--
So 7:30, 7:10.
We packed house on Friday, I bet.
Is there anything else pending for future addendums? Are we making this focused on this one item?
For right now, this is going to be focused on the one item. We have a meeting scheduled for the 12th, so that's, that would be the next regular business. This will be just this one item.
And, you have an 18th in that, too.
You've discussed it, but--
Yeah.
But you don't have to do it right now, but just--
Yeah, no, it's just the 12th.
Okay, we're not until the 18th.
Is that with the charter? We should have the 18th?
Oh, yeah, the 18th, yeah, okay. That's, that's what I'm, once we figure this out, I'm going to bring that up.
So we'll schedule Friday at 7:30. I'm sure we can pick our place, probably downstairs.
So do we need to motion to, we need to motion to continue this to Friday, and then actually, we would have to have a quorum show up to continue it to, for the following Tuesday on Friday? Unless we cancel it?
And if you do cancel it, we need one of you here, just as a protocol.
I'll show up if nobody else can.
So if we are canceling the meeting, we only need one. If we are not canceling the meeting, we only need full--
The only reason we would cancel it is if Town Counsel couldn't be here.
Okay.
So if Town Counsel can't make it, then I'll show up and get a one to cancel it. All right, so all in agreement. Do we need a motion for that?
I would just make the motion to continue to Friday.
All that being said, I will entertain a motion to continue the remand of special permit 488 to, ideally to Friday, 7:30 P.M. What's the date? The 25th?
So moved.
We have a motion. I hesitate, second. There we go. Motion of the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Stained.
All right. So that's all we have on the agenda. I don't want to keep us here too long, but as far as town meeting, did everybody get a chance to take a look?
They're in person.
They're in person to see the carnage. All right.
How is there?
Yes, Peter. So Article, do you want to go through it, Paul, or do you want, do you want me to?
So just going to go through it quickly, but Article 15, which was the proposal we had made that failed. Article 16, which was the one you all took no action on, which was the allowing of single family and, no, sorry, duplex and multifamily commercial, that also, that, that failed to move. The rezonings on Smith Street, that they were approved, and then the petition for Zone Three was also approved as, as proposed, so there were no amendments to that. So that comes back, that will be coming back on November 12th.
And the reason Article 15 failed was, again, like I had said, I'll take blame for this as well.
And I take a lot of blame for it, and we're going to, we're going to be fixing problems. I want to, you know, I don't want to interrupt.
That's all right.
You know, part of my job is making sure you all can do your job, and I failed at that. We made, we had some, we had communication errors here, but, you know, part of that's You know, part of my job is making sure you all can do your job, and I failed at that, we made, we had some, we had communication errors here, but, you know, part of that's just inexperience on my part. And, uh, but we've seen what the problems are. The big thing was, I, I didn't realize that the changes that we made Thursday, that we typed up Friday, didn't get, did not get, uh, printed, and that we didn't have them on the board. And that really put everything in motion, so from here on, I mean, that's, you know, that's on me, so we're gonna fix that. Some other things I wanna do, start doing that, as a town, that we need to do, which is, I think it's gonna be really important that when we get amendments for zoning changes, that we have a public information session in addition to your public meetings. We actually, ironically, we did this for Reed and Barton, and it really worked well, we had about thirty people that showed up to this informational session, people asked their questions, we were able, you know, the team was able to answer them, and last night it actually went through smoothly, so our, the idea of doing the informational session worked. We need to do that here. You know, we can't expect people to just go to town meeting for the first, give them more opportunities. We also need to do a better job of aligning your schedule with FINCOMs. This is gonna, if we can do that, that's a challenge, because there's always a rush between the close of the, this application cycle and when you have to meet and when we have town meeting.
Is there any expanding that process, I mean, the timing?
So that's what's done. Yeah, to jump in on this, my, my thought was, um, and again, this, again, was my second town meeting as, as chair, and the first, the first one, I wasn't, um, I was on the board, but I wasn't highly involved with the warrants and, and the process, um, so, you know, I was looking up under the bus. But I think that, I, I definitely could have learned from that and had us prepare these well in advance, and I think going forward, anything that's not ready, and if it's final form, you know, three weeks, four weeks before the town meeting, then we need to pass it to the next town meeting. I, I think that's a general rule, it, it confuses people, oh, we, we had to make changes, there were four changes, to me, I didn't think they were major, um, I know we discussed them before, but it can be confusing with all that wording, and I understand that. So I think, yeah, time-wise, I think we definitely need to have a, a bigger lead time before we, we put these forward.
We're gonna look into that, Orin, I've asked that, but I know bylaw makes it challenging, and so we need to be consistent.
It's just a question of process, and I think one of the other problems, I think, was with, uh, the bylaw, the amendments we were proposing for identification, those are pretty extensive. And even for us, we're receiving them, I know you generated them with Chris, I mean, and you got to the, went to the selectmen with them for approval.
Yeah.
Is there any way that that comes to us first, so we could vet it with you a little bit more, so we have, you know, get a little bit more input, rather than basically, you know, the selectmen saying we want this, but we seeing it two weeks before, it's a, it's major changes in terms of, you know, some definitions, but then we're changing uses and a different, and we need to be able to explain it to people.
Sure.
And we're still looking at it, just making edits as, as we go along, um, that, that truly delays us, something that big, 'cause we're gonna come across with, you know, now with the, you know, the, the new, um, town reviewing all of this stuff, they're gonna come with some major bylaw changes. We're gonna have to find a process by which we're gonna be able to vet that and, and talk to people about it and explain it, other than trying to do it at a town meeting with a hundred and thirty people.
Yeah.
That's what you have in a town meeting.
I think that's what I'm trying to avoid, you know, and, and again, I'll take the, the, um, I'll take the blame for this one, if, if something comes across two weeks beforehand, it should have been, let's, you know, no. No, we can't take it up as a board and then offer amendments at town meeting and confuse the heck out of people, it's not fair to the voters. Again, it's, it's my lack of experience with, with the town meeting and, um, quite frankly, just not, not being, um, guided, probably, and not, not to your, to you, Paul, but I mean, in general, I think, uh, any board should have, uh, should have some kind of guidance as far as, you know, the new, the new chairs or the new board members as to what you're actually doing, um, procedures.
We were talking about, um, what was it, Article fifteen?
Yeah, yeah.
We were talking about a couple weeks ago, and I wasn't at the meeting last week, so, um, uh, you can blame me for that. But when we were talking about prior, um, I've been to, uh, dozens of town meetings, and I think I advise everybody, you know, don't make changes and don't make it too complicated, because it's fine if the, if our board, you know, discusses it and approves it, but you can't get, uh, you know, a hundred people to, to do that, and you're certain, to your point, you certainly cannot make amendments, uh, on town meeting floor. So I don't know what happened in our meeting last week, why there were amendments, but it was complicated in and of itself, and then you add the amendments on there, I think a little bit differently, I, I don't think information sessions or getting to selectmen's meetings earlier is really the root, um, solution, I think no more amendments on town meeting four, and if it's complicated article to begin with, you know, hand out supplements if you want, but you can't change the, the wording that's in front of everybody in the warrant, you know, and expect them to support something that probably had a, a, a low probability of getting supported in the first place, so.
I, I one hundred percent agree with that, and, and, you know, back to my point is, you know, there are folks in this building that have been at town meetings for twenty, thirty, forty years, uh, and could have just given that little bit of advice of, don't try to push amendments at the town meeting.
I kinda did.
Well, yeah, no.
In our meeting.
I know. Um, and, and back to the, the last meeting, um, my whole, it goes back to that, that marathon meeting, that five and a half hour, whatever it was, meeting, um, at that point, again, we should have voted on the changes, voted on the amendment, and moved on, uh, and just saw it in any typos, we fix it at the next meeting, uh, we shouldn't have had to add definitions, and if we did, it should have been moved on, so.
And we should give you the authority, too, if things go south as quickly as it did, I mean, that was really disaster, I mean-
I, I wanted to pull it, but I, I don't have the authority, but I mean, before we even went up.
We should give you the judgment call there, because we wasted a half hour of everybody's time and got nowhere.
I thought we voted for that ability in the last session.
I don't think we did. We, we can find out, though, because that would make it, that would have made it a lot easier, um, the one thing that I was confused about, too, was, uh, Town Moderator, um, obviously was not happy, but, uh, he said he didn't get the changes, but he got them on Friday, the Friday before, so he got them the very next morning. Even that being said, there's still changes, if it's just a word here and there, that's one thing, but, yeah, whole paragraphs, it's, it's not all right, um, so-
Can you explain to, since I was not at the meeting, why did we have amendments last week?
Two of them had to do, I can do the easy ones first, one was just changing, uh, structure to house, or house to structure?
House.
It was just a word switch, was one of them. The last one had to do with, uh, actually, I might have them in here, it was Chris's question there.
We had, Orin had realized, we didn't, you know, it was on us for missing this, but, uh, there was a proposal to change, uh, one of the roles of, uh, under the roles of the building commissioner, that it says issued zoning ser, uh, compliance, but that he's never, they've never done that, they issue occupancy permit, so we were just simply changing it out, but we s-
We didn't, we didn't get to that one.
A couple sections, Orin saw it, went, okay, wow, good, we need to fix that then, and that was an amendment.
Well, it's where it says, just where it says occupi, where it says occupancy permit, no, it says certificate comply, either way, we didn't even get to it, um, at that point, again, too, at, at the last meeting, um, you know, it was motioned and voted on, so my hands are tied as far as not bringing that to the, the town.
I think in the future, if we just keep, keep it simple, you know, if it doesn't make the, the printing of the town warrant, no amendments or pull the article and don't move it.
Yes, 'cause I think if there's, if there's a typo or like a one-word switch, that's easy enough, but I think even with that, you know, have it out there for-
Well, that's when people question, well, why are you changing one word, and what's the implication of it, and then people over, you know, think it.
Well, yeah.
I mean, we must have spent ten minutes on that one word, dwelling to house or whatever it was, so I don't think that's the solution, I think any change at all in the printing-
No, I'm talking, Kevin, it's-
Just an explanation.
That word, houses into places, we fixed it one, we didn't fix it the other.
That was literally a typo, I mean, typos are gonna happen, you don't want that to be in the final.
Remember, um, Joe was questioning whether we wanted to make, this is on the, um, the-
Accessory.
The accessory use, the permanently attached must be permanently not attached, which is picking up on Joe's language, and the third one was the, the definition of dormitory, which the way it was drafted was overly broad, statutory provisions allowed you to limit it to basically, uh, educational, uh, nonprofit educational and religious sex, the way it was drafted, it could be anything, it could be a dormitory, and those are residential uses.
Yeah, and pull it and wait till spring.
So this goes back to my original, um, you know, when we started the meeting, is that we need to, if we're marking something up, we need to do it all in one meeting, every major change that we're gonna do, and then, just like with the minutes, um, we review the minutes, think of it like that, and we make minor changes, um-
'Cause you know, I mean-
Unless it's something major that we're gonna, we're gonna schedule two days to mark up, uh, two meetings to mark up, I think that we need to, um, especially with these, and, and again, I think that, that long meeting kind of, um, normally I would have voted on, I would have, you know, hoped to have voted on those, 'cause we voted on the other three, uh, and that was the intention that night, but I think that just got out of, uh, out of hand.
I've been involved at town meetings for thirty years, and there's a lot more, um, downside, because people lose credibility, you, we lose credibility in the eyes of the general public.
Oh, I lost some points, absolutely.
The whole, I mean, it was embarrassing for me, being a member of the board, and we just can't let that happen again, I mean, we're all here, we're teammates, and, and being completely honest. That's why I stand by you a hundred percent.
Well, I think one, one op, option going down the road, as Orin, you mentioned, when it's a staff generated, we can start working sooner on these. Someone had suggested afterwards that, uh, in other, other communities that he's been involved with, that they have a subcommittee that deals with zoning bylaw changes, so it might be, you know, a subcommittee with Planning Board and ZBA, for example, that could take a look and be an eye on it, too, so that way you could get a view, get some, uh, multiple perspectives from different, different boards, so, um, I think I have a text from Amy, so, sorry.
All right.
So, she's not available?
When?
Friday.
Okay.
The Friday meeting will be canceled?
So it'll be Tuesday, the seventeenth.
She says I suggest that they meet, and then perhaps you and I need to hand around a decision. Okay.
No, we'll just do a Tuesday, I'd, I'd like to have her there.
Me, too.
Yeah, I don't know why we would go through any of that without her.
Did she, did she have a conflict tonight, I assume?
No, because we didn't have Joe, so we had to, we had to move it anyways. Yeah.
I'll just gonna respond to her then.
Tuesday, the twenty-ninth?
Yeah. Okay. So we would need a motion to continue with the-
So who's not gonna be here Tuesday? We know Julie's not.
Julie's not, and Orin's not.
We know it's not, yeah.
All right. So I think we would need a new motion then to continue with, to Tuesday, the twenty-ninth.
So you still, you still only have four?
We'll have five for a quorum, uh, as far as the meeting, but, um,
It's okay to do it, we were just taking a shot that we would have more people next week.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but you can't take a re-vote on anything else? You can't, you won't have-
We're not gonna be, we're not gonna be voting anything.
You won't, okay, you won't have-
I don't, I don't expect a vote on anything.
She'll be there Tuesday.
Okay.
Well, I, I mean, if she tells me that my vote on the special permit was out of bounds, then we could always have a motion to reconsider and re-vote that, so don't say we may not vote.
Yeah, well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna say that we're not gonna vote, but I don't wanna have people thinking that we're definitely gonna re-vote anything.
We wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't be able to vote on, to reconsider on a special permit on Tuesday, so I guess we would only have four voting numbers, and we need five to revote.
So here, here's what I think, then, if, say, say it does turn out that, that we do need to re-vote it, or there is gonna be another vote, I would say that we need to mark the decision up, have it complete and ready, uh, with all of our, our thoughts and our, you know, um, our, our reasons, so that it can be produced, for the most part, before Friday, and then we would have to have a meeting on Friday, uh, that Friday.
Friday the first?
Yeah. So at least that, the, the part of, of Paul getting everything together, uh, Paul on the, he'll get everything, everything together could be done in advance, and we would just be revoting. That's, that's just for that example, I'm not saying that's gonna happen or anything.
So I was referencing her information when I-
Yeah, we, we can't discuss the-
Okay.
Yeah, I, I know what you're saying, but, yeah, we can't, um-
Had she had been then here at the last meeting, if she had stayed till the end of the meeting, we probably would be beyond that.
More than likely, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so we would need a motion to, uh, to continue with the, Tuesday, the twenty-ninth.
So move.
Motion to-
I'll second.
Okay. So just for clarification, your motion is to continue special permit four eighty-eight to Tuesday, the twenty-ninth.
Seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen. Motion of the second, all in favor? Aye.
Opposed.
Abstain.
All right.
Someday, I'm so happy to study. You can stay on for the big decisions.
Someday I'll have them.
We're getting there, we're getting there.
Yeah, your, your time's coming.
So, yeah, I, I think this, this discussion warrants a lot more, um, a lot more discussion, I think we should talk about how things are, are prepared in, uh, town lines. One of our, hopefully, we have a meeting or two that's, that's fairly light, I'd like to put that on the agenda, so we can kinda get deeper into it. So the one last, uh, one last thing I have is, uh, Charter Commission, we never discussed who or if anyone would like to, to meet with them on the, potentially the eighteenth, I'm still waiting to hear back if they still have it open. To represent the Planning Board as far as, I mean-
So, just to, this was in the minutes for the last meeting, they're not willing to do a joint meeting, or is that-
They're not willing to do a joint meeting, yeah.
Is there, uh, their preference, or is there-
I, I asked months ago to do a joint meeting, to try to set something up, and, um, I was told that, um, because they, they're meeting with so many people, uh, it's just not feasible.
They have three different groups down there today.
Yeah, and so they're trying to do a couple at every meeting, so, and I understand, they have a lot to get through, so.
Okay. Usually the, um, the employee, the director, or wherever, and, uh, the spokesperson, usually the chairperson, that's what I've been seeing, two people go up there and discuss, and with the planning board, just, um, you know, they don't understand some things that govern, uh, different boards and committees in, in the state, so I don't think there's a whole lot of latitude on how planning boards can be, can function, and maybe that's something you can explain, you know, in the open.
I spoke, well, I spoke with them a few months ago, but they, it wasn't focused on the role of Planning Board, so, but I-
There's no about resources, I watched that, yeah, yep.
Yeah, I'm happy to go, I'm happy to go, I just wanted to, to put it out there if anybody else wanted to, and-
I can be there as well.
Yeah, we can, I mean, we can have, doesn't have to be one of us, it could be, I think if, if we have a quorum, then we need to note it as a meeting, but-
It would have to be posted as a meeting.
Um, we would talk a lot about experience and, uh, and such, and I, for that reason, I would suggest if, if you guys are okay with it, that Joe speak on the-
Joe's available, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. He's our senior member.
Yeah, to be quite frank, I mean, that's what I was hoping for when, when I put it out there for the board, to see if he would go.
He has a lot of town history as well, in terms of that tribal knowledge.
And you guys know he was the town administrator in Plainville for years.
Okay. So, um, if Orin, you wanted to go, if-
If Joe goes, that's fine.
Okay. So we'll set that up offline, I just wanna make sure that, um, that everybody had the opportunity if they wanted to.
Yeah, go me on what it is, if it works out, I can-
So it, it potentially is the, the eighteenth, but if that changes, I'll let everybody know, too.
Do we need to continue the, set up our next meeting to make sure that it's the twenty, the twenty-ninth, you continued it to the twenty-ninth, but you didn't set a meeting day for the twenty-ninth, do we need to do that?
I think, to a point, that was under, was that a-
Yeah, we don't need to vote for the meeting days, right?
We don't? Okay.
No, we just, uh, yeah, we just set it for the twenty-ninth, so we're not gonna have one Friday.
It'll be noticed.
You have a sigh of relief for Friday, one?
Who would have been here?
I know.
Steve, what I'll try to do before I go is maybe just drag down some of my thoughts on, on, on the decision.
Yeah, I wanted, what I was saying-
I had some edits that I, I'll, I, I tried to download a Word version, but I don't seem to be able to get it very well, I'll try it again, I think you sent me one direct.
Yeah, I just sent you the file, did it work?
I, I think I got, I'll try it, I said I could do a redline copy, and I can send it to you, and you can start, at least with my comments on it, they were.
Do you have a Mac, are you opening it on the Mac?
Yeah.
That's why, that's why.
Usually Mac can open Windows, it's not the other way around.
Yeah, some I can, some I can't, it just, some just doesn't recognize the files.
So to, to Orin's point, I wanna make sure, I mean, if somebody's not here, I wanna make sure that, to the full extent legally we can, I want their voice to be heard, and, um, Joe, yeah, Orin, anything that you have to put forth, we'll make sure, um, we get into it, uh, and, and at least bring it to Amy, so we can go through them all.
Okay.
Um, and I'll, I'll offer the same thing with Julie, uh, for her thoughts and, and recommendations, probably, too, as long, as long as we're okay to, to do that and then bring them forth, uh, at the meeting, I think it should be fine, but I just wanna make sure we do everything, uh, the right way.
Thing, I, I need to check with the town manager about remote, uh, he made a, there was some conversation about it, if we were able to do some remote participation possibly, I was thinking with, with a live broadcast, and, you know, we have speakerphone.
We, we approved that a while back, didn't we?
We did, and it was-
I don't, I don't think the selectmen have approved it yet, though, I think it was going through the boards and then to them.
Is it still?
I think, last one I watched, I think it was still pending.
Okay.
Do they need some equipment to do it, though, that they don't have?
No. As long as it's functional, there's not a specific equipment set that's required.
You know, again, we have a live broadcast that happens, so, you know, it's a few second delay, but, but then they could, if they want speaker.
It would be, it would have to be the equivalent of a speakerphone in some way, she, that's basically how it would be.
Yeah, we have that.
And whether that is, whether that, as Scott said, was, that is, that's something the town manager would know, whether that is fair game or not.
I'll check with him tomorrow.
Yeah, so we can-
That helps.
That may help things. All right. Anybody have anything else? All right. So.
I guess.
Motion to adjourn. We'll see you next Tuesday.
Yep.
Yep.
Second.
Second. Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.